Leading to order, roll call please be.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes, here.
Mr. Delaporte?
Yeah.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Mr. Galati?
Here. Okay, first order of business tonight would be the acceptance of the minutes from November 12th, 2019. Everybody a chance to read those?
Yes, I did.
All good, no comments?
No, it's fine.
Okay, so make a motion to accept the minutes, as written.
Make a motion to accept the minutes, as written.
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Yes, I.
Hi.
Okay, okay, first item on the, or second item on the agenda is a public hearing, appeal number 197693, Jeanette Marie Wilson seeking an area variance of section 24037 of the district regulations in an R80 zoning district where 40 feet is required to the side yard, the applicant can provide 37 foot six inches for the construction of an eight by 13 enclosed porch, thus requesting a variance of two feet six inches. The property is located at 384 Cedar Hill Road and is identified as tax grid number 625601271816 in the town of Wappinger. Anybody here to, uh, to represent the Wilsons? Okay, I'll make, oh, sorry, excuse me, one second, I'll make, can someone make a motion to open the public hearing, please?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
I have a second?
A second.
Okay, anybody representing the Wilsons? Come on up, come up to the mic, please. Just as an FYI, there's a four-member board tonight, usually there's five. You would have the option to adjourn the public hearing, come when you have a full board, or you can proceed with the four members, entirely up to you.
That's fine.
Okay, so we'll proceed. All right, so for everybody in the audience, could you just give us kind of a brief rundown on what you need and why you need it?
Actually, I'm representing my sister, Janet.
Sure.
On the opposite side of where this proposed, excuse me, porch is going, the solar touches building club exists and she doesn't have much peace and quiet, basically. Also, it provides an easier access to the backyard off of room level with, with the ground. And that's pretty much, pretty much it.
And, um, could you, just for the record, state your name?
Glenn Ledoux.
Glenn Ledoux. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we were, we were all out at the site, you know, to look at it. Couple of weeks ago, you guys have any questions for the applicant?
I just had a statement, I thought that, um, the house is, how old is it? The house, when, when, it looks like it's, uh, predated.
I think the house has been there for, um, 50 years.
50 years. Okay, so I thought a lot of the stuff that was there was, looked like it might have predated, because the houses of that age might have predated the zone. That was my interpretation.
You're talking about sheds, the trailer.
Trailer.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm confusing, I'm sorry. Never mind, never mind. No, that's another good point, the sheds, yeah.
There should be a couple of accessory structures on the property. Seems to be a, some type of a shed or, or even like a small apartment on the top of the hill there. Is that just a storage shed?
A storage shed.
Do you have, is it way up on top? Does any other questions?
Not on.
Nope. Is there anybody in the audience that would speak in favor or against this variance? For the record, nobody's raising any issues or questions, I have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion to deny or grant the applicant the variance.
I'll make a motion that we grant the variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, the, there is no substantial detriment that will be created to nearby properties, there is no other feasible means available for you to pursue or to achieve the result or the benefit that you seek other than the requested variance. The requested variance is not substantial and the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood and the alleged difficulty is not self-created, therefore, is determined that the variance be granted.
Thank you.
Well, we have to have a vote first.
Second, can I have a second? Second, you have a vote, vote, uh, roll call be?
Yes. Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Galati?
Yes. All right, so your variance is granted. Any, do you have any homework for the applicant? Paperwork?
No, but this will go to the building department on Monday with the holiday, it's a short week, and then the building department will call you when the permit's ready.
Thank you so much.
Great, well said, thank you, good night. All right, next up on the agenda, appeal, appeal number 197691, Edward Collins seeking an area variance of section 24037 of the district regulations in our 4080 zoning district, couple of things going on here. Where 50 feet is required to the rear yard, the applicant can provide two feet for the legalization of a garage, thus requesting a variance of 48 feet. Where 40 feet is required to the side yard, the applicant can provide 4.6 feet for the legalization of garage, thus requesting a variance of 35.4 feet. Where 40 feet is required to the side yard, the applicant can provide 38.6 feet for the legalization of the garage, thus requesting a variance of 1.4 feet. Where 50 feet is required to the front yard, the applicant can provide 25.1 feet for the legalization of a three-season room, thus requesting a variance of 24.9 feet. The property is located at 2 Hamilton Road and is identified as tax grid number 615701032872 in the town of Wappinger. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there is anybody here representing Mr. Collins?
Excuse me?
Yes.
The first two variances refer to the garage.
Say it again.
The first two variances refer to the garage, side and rear, the third variance is to the three-season room.
Gotcha.
Two separate, yes.
Gotcha, so we'll amend that, right?
Can you say that again, Barb?
The third variance down, it says where 40 feet is required to the side yard, the applicant can provide 38.6 feet for the legalization of a garage, it should be sunroom, thus requesting a variance of 1.4 feet.
This is three-season?
Yeah, not good.
Sunroom, okay.
Got it. Okay, can I, please state your name, please?
Yeah, Edward Collins.
So you're Mr. Collins. Okay, just for the audience, can you please let them know exactly why you'd like the variance? What you need and why you want it?
We're trying to sell the house.
Gotcha.
We're in contract to sell the house, and then this came up about the variance in the building department, so I'm just going through.
Process of legalizing existing structures, basically. Gotcha, gotcha. Any questions from the board? I mean, we were all there.
Not a question, but I did notice a statement in one of the documents that these additions were built in 1945.
Well, there was, it was sheds on the property at that time.
At that time, so way before.
Right, they were, there was greenhouses down there, and it was all on sheds on.
So these are pre-existing?
Yeah, they were, they were long.
Do you know what year the garage was built?
Well, it's, it's a shed.
I don't know, I think I'm the first thing.
It's got a garage door.
It has, it's got a garage door, but it's just a short door.
It's like a tractor door.
But what year was the sunroom added on?
I don't, I don't know, I don't know the.
So the reason he's here is the sunroom was not built before 1963.
Not that, I don't know the time.
But when we look through the assessor's records, we're throwing the garage on for variances just to legalize it, it does predate zoning, and if it was only the shed, he wouldn't be here, because it predates zoning. But when we have situations like this where we're legalizing something, we look at the rest of the lot, and then we just add the other older things on, just so that the whole lot is legal for variances.
Right, to take care of it all in one shot.
Right, in one shot.
Yeah, I got it.
And Pete, this, this was what I was speaking of when I was saying something the first time, thanks. Well, that's what I meant, the house was, looked like, it looked like that, it was a predated zoning shed.
Gotcha.
I got confused with the other.
With the other applicant?
Okay.
Any, any other questions or concerns of the board?
Nope.
Any members of the audience here to speak on behalf or against this variance? Could you come up, please? Could we state your name for the record, please?
My name is Stephen Van Tassel, I live at 4 Hamilton Road.
Gotcha.
Right next door. Thank you, gentlemen, very much for coming out and viewing the property that's in question, and as I had said to you all that day, that we, my wife, Jeanne, and I are supporting this variance.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay, thank you, thank you for coming out tonight. Okay, if that's all the audience has, then I, can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion to close.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, can I have a motion to deny or grant the variance, please?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance. The benefit cannot be achieved by any other means, there's no undesirable change to the neighborhood, I don't think the rest of the request is particularly substantial, it will not have any adverse physical environmental effects, and it's not self-created.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Roll call be?
Yes, here.
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so your grant, your variance has been granted, so you're set, you're ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, have a great night.
So you'll hear from the building department Monday or Tuesday, with the holiday, we'll be a few days behind.
We have the permit in, so that's still.
Yep, they'll call you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, let's see, next up on tonight's agenda is appeal number 197692, Fred Thomas seeking an area variance of section 24057AIA of the district regulations in an R2040 zoning district where 50% of the house footprint of 2,034 square feet, 2% equals 1,017 square feet, is required, the applicant can provide two arrays totaling 1,252.78 square feet for the installation of ground solar array, thus requesting a variance of 235.78 square feet. The property is located at 197 Riverview and is identified as tax grid number 625602772840 in the town of Wappinger. Can I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
Open the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Bob Hamel, I'm the founder of Solar Plus, and I'm here on behalf of Fred Thomas.
Gotcha.
We're seeking to variance in order to install a 10.8, a 10,800 watt solar array in front of the existing solar array.
Gotcha, gotcha, we were all up at the site.
Yeah, for the record, this is 15 acre lot or so?
15, seven.
Okay. And it's, it's quite secluded. It's, I might say, a very interesting, interesting setup that you have up there, yeah, for sure. Any questions you guys have for the applicant? Yeah, we spent quite some time up there with you, thank you very much for your explanations as, as we were there, we had a lot of nice, good questions, a lot of good answers as well. If you guys don't have any more questions, I'll ask the, the audience, are there anybody in the audience here to speak on behalf or against the solar panels? Or array, as you will? Okay?
Pete, I would like to say something, I think that we have 50% of the size of the house footprint, right, but one, one note in here which I think is relevant.
In the application?
In the application, is that this is not going to be on the house per se, these are arrays that are off the house.
Brown mounted, right.
Brown mounted, yeah, so it's.
Somewhat different.
Yeah, somewhat different.
Right, you're not, your panels, if anybody who might be interested, your panels that are in an array as opposed to being mounted on the roof. And again, we were out there, saw exactly what's going on, pretty straightforward.
Did this have to go to the planning board for a?
Yes, so in the residential, in the residential code, if you go to put solar panels on your roof, you just need a building permit, but the code, if you want to put solar panels or arrays in a yard on the ground, you need a special use permit.
So that's in process?
He is in front of the planning board.
Okay, so, did we, we did, got as far as closing, I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Okay, can I have a motion to grant or deny the applicant the variance, please?
I'll make a motion that we grant the variance. I don't believe that'll produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. There will be no substantial detriment to nearby properties, there is no other feasible means available for, to pursue the objective. The requested variance, I would say is not substantial, it's not small, but it's not really huge either. And it will not have an adverse environmental impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or the district, and the alleged difficulty is self-created. So I, I would say that we, I determine that we should grant the variance.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call be?
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, so your variance has been granted, so you're all set, ready to go.
Thank you, and very much thanks, yeah.
Thanks for coming out tonight, you as well. Okay, next up on the agenda is appeal number 197690, Anthony and Danielle Jeanette seeking an area variance sections 24037 and 2403B of the district regulations in an R40 zoning district where no more than two accessory buildings shall be permitted in any one-family residential district. No such accessory building shall have a footprint greater than 600 square feet nor a height in excess of 20 feet. The applicant is proposing a 24 by, 24 by 36-foot three-car garage, 864 square feet, thus requesting a variance of 264 square feet, where no more than two accessory buildings shall be permitted in any one-family residential district. No such accessory building shall have a footprint greater than 600 square feet nor a height in excess of 20 feet. The applicant can provide 22 in height for the construction of a three-car garage, thus requesting a variance for two feet. Where 50 feet is required to the front yard, the applicant can provide 32 feet for the construction of a three-car garage, thus requesting a variance of 18 feet. Where no accessory structure is permitted in the front yard, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow for the construction of the three-car garage in the front yard. The property is located at 29 Van de Water Drive and is identified as tax grid number 625904757238 in the town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
Motion to open the public hearing?
Can I have a second?
A second.
Come on up, name, please, for the record, your name?
Anthony Jeanette.
And address, I guess we know.
29 Van de Water Drive, Wappinger Falls.
Gotcha. Can you please explain to the audience, for folks that are here, how and what and why you need it?
All right, so, right now I need to use it for storage, because I have to get everything out of my basement, have to finish the basement, I have two kids, and I'd like it for the cars to begin with, too. Then maybe, like I said, later on, down the line, maybe, you know, if a relative, like if a mother-in-law or father-in-law eventually, because they're getting pretty high up there in age, to tell you the truth.
Did, did, say about the mother and father-in-law again, I'm sorry?
They're, they're getting up there in, in age eventually, so, I mean, later on, you know, not, you know, not, not now, obviously.
And, but what was your intention with them?
Um, maybe eventually, I might have them either live in the basement or, or.
Gotcha.
So, just for the record, we do not allow accessory apartments any longer in detached structures.
But I still have to get all that stuff out of the basement. I have a thousand square foot basement, pretty much, it goes the length of the house.
Of your house.
Yeah, it's, I mean, you guys were there the other day, I mean, last week, whatever, but it goes, it goes the length of my house.
Gotcha. All right, so we, we were all at the house, I mean, all at the house, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We did the site visit, we were all there together, we all got a copy of, of the plans of, of the addition and what you would like to do there. The, the building is substantial, and there's no getting around that, right? It's a three-car garage, it's, it's quite large in the footprint, it's also quite high. You know, you have basically a second story on the building, and that's like a full story, not really a storage story, but a full story. You know, it's, it's tough to take a look at so many variances that are substantial in the same application. Would you consider, as the applicant, reducing this to a two-car garage and reducing the height of it?
Um, not really, to tell you the truth, because, like I said, I've got a hundred thousand square feet downstairs in my basement right now, so I have to, I mean, it's stacked with stuff, I mean, I can't fit all in my shed or anything like that, and.
Yeah.
Open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I haven't.
Go ahead, go ahead, I thought you did, yeah.
Did you do that, Shaw?
Yeah, you've motioned.
Confusing me, Bob. Okay, okay, so, so we, so we did that. Now, again, you know, just from the board's perspective, we were all out there.
Yeah.
And saw the property, and this is a very large footprint for what you want to put on the side of your house, well, basically in the front of the house.
Yeah, yeah.
This is what you're looking to do. It's a, it's a substantial variance. The other thing I wanted to ask you about, I know we questioned you when we were out there about the shed.
Yeah, the shed.
The shed is.
There was a, there was a, there was a shed there that was knocked down right before I got the house, and then the town told me, put the shed where, where that was, and it has to be under 120 square feet for, to not have a, a permit.
So we require a permit for all sheds?
Anything.
And the paperwork we have is that the previous owner removed the shed, so this has, you need, how big is it?
It's 10 by 10.
You need a permit for that.
Well, that's not what you guys said when I called, I called, I actually came in and asked somebody about it, because.
I can't speak to that.
All right.
So, I'm a little confused, so you, so you bought the house, the shed was not there?
The shed was not there, it was.
The footprint was basically there.
Exactly.
Gotcha, and you put a shed in the same.
In the same spot, yeah, exactly.
Right, I follow you. I, I understand that that's something that, you know, would have to be legalized at some point.
Okay.
Was it 10 by 10 shed?
It was 10 by 10, yeah, because, I mean, I even asked my neighbor across the street, he said he had to get one for his because of the line and, and the size of it, but, I mean, for, I mean, when I, like I said, when I came in and asked about it, they said 120 square feet or lower, I wouldn't have to bother with a permit for it.
Gotcha.
So, that's why, that's why I never, I mean, I remember you guys asking me about it when, when you guys were there, so I was like.
Right.
And I was like, that's what, that's what I told, so that's what I did.
So we, do we understand, do we understand now it's going to need to be legalized? Regardless of that, as far as the application goes, again, a lot of your requests are substantial in nature, and tough for a board to look past that. Do you guys have any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question for Barb. Barb, do, do these variances have to be addressed one by one?
You can address them one by, actually, when you have multiple variances, they really should be, for the record.
And we have, we're short of, you know, like Pete explained, we're short of one guy, so.
You have to, now, wait.
Right, yeah. I mean, as I mentioned to the applicant, I should have mentioned to you as well, it's up to you, we could adjourn the public hearing with a full board, or we can proceed, just for your own knowledge, too, if the vote ended up being a tie, that's deemed as a no by the zoning board, just an FYI. But before, before we get to that portion, I'm going to open up to the audience, you know, any, anybody in the audience like to speak for or against this variance? Come on up. For the record, please, your name and address.
Uh, yeah, Pat Richard, I live at 13 Harbor Hill Road, and I live on a parcel that's adjacent to this property in question.
Gotcha.
And in all the 37 years I've lived there, I've never seen a project of this size in, in a footprint in our entire neighborhood, most of the neighborhood is predominantly small capes and smaller, like I have a race ranch of that type, and I'm just a little worried that it might, as constituted, it might, you know, cause an issue with, you know, potentially property values and so forth, and so, you know, I just wanted to at least bring that up as a concern.
Sure, oh, sure.
You know, but.
A valid concern.
You know, I don't have anything against someone having a garage, or, you know, something like that, but it just seemed like the project was quite large, so.
I apologize, what was your name again?
Uh, yeah, Pat Richard.
Richard, okay, so you're facing Mr. Jeanette's house.
Yeah, well, I'm directly west of the property, so where the property is, you go directly towards the Hudson River, if you want to say that, which is a westward direction, that's where my property is, yeah.
I see your name on the plan here.
Oh, yes, yes. There you go, there you go.
Okay.
And, but, yeah, yeah, that was my main thing, and so, you know, I just wanted to make sure that you heard that.
Sure, no valid concern, appreciate it.
Okay, very good, thanks for meeting up.
You're very welcome. Anybody else in the audience like to speak for or against? Step right up. Please, your name and address.
Mary Richard, 13 Harbor Hill, yeah, again, it's nothing personal, it is, we were invited to speak, so it is, for me, a matter of my quality of life, only because it is substantial and he's pushing it forward, it's right in the direct sunrise, and I've built a, to code a three-season room, and I think it'll impact my views as well as the amount of sunshine into my home, as well as my pool, and I am concerned that if it becomes a two-family structure, I will lose the sale value as a single-family dwelling, because I, I mean, I love Anthony's day, but if he sells it, I can't guarantee that somebody else that moves in will not then decide to use it as rental property, as he is just over the line of my property.
Sure, totally, understood, very valid, thank you. Anybody else in the audience speak for or against the variance?
Here it comes.
Right up. Please, your name and address.
My name is Michael Jobs, I'm on 25 Van de Water Drive, I'm, the lot right in front of him. I personally have no problem with him doing that, he's a great neighbor, and I understand what the other neighbors are concerned about, but I don't see Anthony doing that. I think he probably just wants to raise his family there, and his family would take over after he's done.
Sure.
Just like all of us have that dream.
Sure, so anybody have valid concerns if he were ever to sell the property, once we grant the vali, a variance for whatever, it lives on forever with that property?
I mean, he takes good care of his property and everything.
Oh, no, sure.
He doesn't let it go or anything.
Sure, sure, we got that, yeah, we noticed that when we were out there, no issues with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any audience, anybody in the audience, anybody on the board?
Well, I agree with, I'm sure of someone, I, I agree that substantially large.
I think it only lies high and also close to the, the borderline, so I think anything we are asking, I think is substantial.
Yeah, the, yeah, the variances are substantial.
For that area.
There's no, there's no doubt. Again, we wanted to ask you again if you consider reducing it in some fashion, way or form, before we go ahead and vote.
What, what? What, what would be good for you? That's what I was asking.
Well, of course, you know, that...
How small can you go? I mean, even with, even with a two-car garage, how small can you actually go?
You're right, well, two-car, you know, a two-car and shrink the height of it, so you don't have a full second story above it. If you need storage above it, right, you really don't need a full eight feet.
I understand, that's twenty feet, but I'm only, it's only two feet. I could see about fifteen something like that.
But you have a full eight foot above the garage.
That's...
So today is storage space, but tomorrow it could be living quarters.
That's exactly the size of my, that's the size of my basement, pretty much. If you think, I got eight feet down there, same thing.
Okay.
You know, that's, I'm just saying, so...
All right, so if there's no further questions, I'll move to close the public hearing. Do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do you have a second?
I'm seconding.
All right, so could I have a motion to deny or grant the applicant the variance? As written.
I would, I'm uncomfortable doing this, but we've tried to work with you to reduce the variances. I'll make a motion to deny the variance. The benefit, some of the benefit can be achieved by other means. It would be an undesirable change in the neighborhood. The request is very substantial. It will have adverse physical effects on the neighborhood, and the difficulty is self-created.
Okay. Tell it there, your vote is to deny the variance.
To deny the variance.
Do I have a second?
I'm seconding.
Could I have a roll call, please, B?
Yes.
No, that would be a no.
I mean, no.
No.
I say no.
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 So the variance as written is denied? I don't know if there's any paperwork or anything that...
You can come back, you cannot come back with this thing again, but you can come back with something smaller.
Yeah, I know what you just said.
Yeah, sure.
Something new.
And again, you know...
No, I know, that's what I'm saying to you, though. What would be, like I said, what would be a reasonable size? Because to think about it, say if I did a twenty-four by twenty-four two-car garage.
It certainly would be, would be much more palatable, right, for the board? You know, we like to work with folks, but we always like to see some given, some take on both sides.
Yeah.
You know, your unwillingness originally to reduce it at all makes it a little tough pill for us to swallow.
If you keep it to six hundred square feet and get it out of the front yard, you'd be close. And no second floor.
I, you know, but you mess around with it, massage it a little bit, and again, we're willing to work with you, but we need to see some movement on your side. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think you could work with Barbara, I don't want to put Barbara on the spot, but Barbara, you could work with Barbara also. Thank you, Mr. Jeanette.
I don't think there's any more business before the board tonight, is there?
I told them you need a permit.
This can't be traction supply.
I never got the number for the distance from the municipal boundary.
Okay. I told Alex... I mean, that's certainly why we wanted to come tonight.
No, but I explained to him what I needed, and he said he would talk to your surveyor.
I apologize, that I got you. So let me back up, because this is really informational.
Except we're going to entertain tonight, Barbara.
It's not a decision, this is, this really truly is for your benefit.
Okay.
Ultimately, in the long run, for my client's benefit, but ultimately, so...
And your name again?
I'm going to do all that in a second, Chairman. So Chairman, good evening, my name's Neil Alexander, we're partner at Cuddy and Fader. I'm here tonight on behalf of Tarpon Towers. You probably got a copy of our October ninth application for...
No, I don't need it.
No, we're actually in the dark totally about this.
So here's the problem, if you should need...
It was submitted on October ninth.
I know, but we're waiting to find out if you need that third variance.
Right, but they're involved agency.
Right.
So, give me, give me a little, like, five minutes of your time, because honestly, this inures to everyone's benefit. I'm not driving an application forward, because you can't make an action, take action on this application, even if you wanted to, because the planning board is going to be lead agency, and we haven't concluded seeker, and we're at the very beginning of all this.
So this is where we're going to be, we're going to turn the hourglass, and you've got five minutes.
Five. So, anyway, so basically what's happening here is there's a property at one-ten Chelsea Road. It's a large farm, the property's probably well over fifty acres. It spans both the village and, excuse me, spans both the town and the town. It goes all the way deep from town of Wapond, all the way down to the town of Fishkill, you know, as Caroline Drive and Booth, it's Booth Boulevard.
Is this the horse farm?
This is the horse farm, exactly.
I live on the Booth Boulevard, so...
Okay, so basically, right, we've developed in concert with the property owner a plan to put a wireless facility that'll be anchored by Verizon on the property, right on literally the municipal boundary, essentially. Centered in the middle of the property. It's a hundred-and-fifty-foot-tall monopole. It'll be in a hundred-by-hundred lease area, fifty-by-fifty compound. And I'm sorry that, because we submitted back on October ninth, and we asked to be on your agenda to come, because what's happening is on, not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, based upon our November fourth appearance in front of the planning board, there will be a publicly noticed balloon float, starting at nine o'clock in the morning till one o'clock in the afternoon.
What's the date of that?
Sorry?
What's the date?
December seventh. So in the packet, what was given, in the packet, was a series of locations from where we're going to take our photos. You have a very specific standard in your code. We went over that with the planning board. Actually, they added on an additional shot from Caroline Drive and from Booth Boulevard at the recommendation of, I think it was, I think it was Jim Heran, your town attorney, I wasn't sure if it was Jim, or it may have been you, Barbara, I can't remember, at that meeting. We went over all the provisions for that. I can bring that up to show you where the photos are being taken, because really what I'm coming tonight to do was to tell you that it's happening, so you could be aware, see if there are any extra locations you wanted to. We have the boat ramp, the post office, we're down in Chelsea. What's important is, so this facility is essentially trying to get west. Obviously, the ridge towards Stony Kill and the Taconic prevents us from getting there. In fact, what we contemplate is going to happen is that when you're from the east, the ridge behind will hide the facility when you're looking back. Full visual report is the purpose of this balloon float. The planning board has circulated notice of their intent to be lead agency. They are going to also hire a wireless consultant, was the last thing that I had heard. So we're at the beginning of this process. It will go very quickly once the balloon float is done, and we anticipate submitting that, you know, near the end of the year, so that way we can be talking about this, you know, you know, pretty robustly during the first quarter of twenty-twenty. And really, I just wanted to come tonight. So the reason why your board's jurisdiction is involved is that ultimately, and there's some discussion about this, but where the facility is located, there's no question that we will be within the seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot limiting distance of five of the houses on Caroline Drive.
Caroline Drive?
It's Drive, right?
Yes.
Yeah, Drive. And so we'll be about anywhere from five-hundred-and-fifty, I think we have a drawing, and we'll get, that talks about it, and we're going, we owe you, I think, a better drawing about that as well. But one of our drawings points out the limiting distance. So it's anywhere from five-hundred-and-fifty up to like six-hundred-and-twenty feet. Those five houses are within the seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot limiting distance, so we'll need a variance for that. By reference, if you go the other way, it's the same, we'd have the same problem. So it's a question of a few feet one side or the other. There's no way to put a facility on this property. I don't want to get too much into the merits, and we'll, you know, we'll talk about that. So that's one variance we need. There has been, we believe, by the way, Barbara, that the equipment compound is a concrete pad. It's seven by, four by seven, it's twenty-eight square feet, so...
We're not measuring for the pad, it would be to the tower.
The tower is more than fifty feet.
That's what I needed to know.
Yeah, it's more than fifty, because it's in a hundred-by-hundred.
Right, so that's...
It's in by fifty by fifty, it's approximately sixty feet will get you...
Just so you know, there's a municipal boundary that runs behind the leased area. It's Fishkill versus Wapond. And the way the code is, I don't have the code in front of me, but it says that if you are near municipal boundary, setbacks apply. Due to the zone there, I think it's forty-eighty or forty... They need fifty feet to put anything. So the question was, how close is the tower to the municipal boundary? And the question is, if it's closer, that would need a variance. If it's not, it's...
So we're just outside it, we won't need that variance. And then our equipment facility is an accessory structure, so it's more, it would be ten feet, and I think we're forty feet back. I think ultimately, the precise variances will get worked out, too, because let's, we'll see what the results of the visual study are, and we'll see if we need to move the compound a little bit here. Also, just so you know, those of you who live in the area, at the back of the property of that horse farm, there is an existing, there are existing federal wetlands, and we're doing a nationwide permit for less than a tenth of an acre disturbance, so we're kind of have a pathway in keeping the facility completely in Wapond.
Gotcha.
So we're at the beginning, but it will go fast, and that's why I really just wanted to come and thank you for my five minutes.
I think you were six and a half.
But at least, you know, like I said, I think it inures to everyone's benefit, and sorry that jurisdictionally, because it isn't all precisely known, we weren't, you know, on the agenda, but I really wanted to give that chance to warm us up.
Two questions, what was the date of the planning board meeting?
November fourth, there was a planning board meeting where it was discussed.
I can go to see what they, look at what they did.
Yeah, exactly.
What's the time of this balloon test, nine to what?
So it is scheduled for nine AM to one PM on December seventh, with a weather date of December eighth.
Saturday and Sunday.
That is correct.
Okay, we're good. Thank you for inviting us in.
Oh, and, sorry.
We can mail, send these out, this, next week we'll mail them, since X has been answered.
Yes, and I think our notice is going out tomorrow, probably, to make it in time. The other thing I want to know is, yes, on the fire bureau, having their equipment on there, so we're trying to work that out.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so with no further business, I'll ask for motion...
We have meeting dates.
We have to vote on this? You have to vote, did everybody take a look at that?
Should I vote?
I have a motion to accept the calendar as written for twenty-twenty?
Accept the calendar as written for twenty-twenty.
Why are they always on Tuesday?
Would you like to change the date?
I have a motion to accept.
I accept.
Have a second?
I'm seconding.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful, so moved. Now, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a second.
I have a question. Do we have members of the audience that have something?
Are you waiting for something?